Executive Order N 2920 dated March the 17th, 2020. By order of the Health Officer of San Mateo County, directing all individuals living in the county to shelter at their place of residence. The governor has allowed local legislative bodies to hold public meetings via teleconference and to make public meetings accessible telephonically or otherwise electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and to address the local legislative body or state body to avoid public gathering and has suspended all contrary provisions of the ground. This meeting will be via conference only and can be watched in real time on community television, cable channel 27, or on www.mctv.tv. The public cannot come to the Millbury Soul Chambers to join this meeting as this is a remote meeting with no public location. To maximize time for public comment, members of the public are encouraged to provide comments via joining the planning commission meeting via Zoom for web, HTTPS, zoom.us. Select Join a Meeting and enter the ID number 84727989955. Use the raise hand feature to request to speak. For dial in comments, call 16699009128. Enter the meeting ID number 84727989955 to speak. All public comments are subject to a three-minute time limit unless otherwise determined by the planning chair. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission Meeting of October the 19th. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. We will now move on to the Planning Commission Meeting and the agenda of October the 19th. Are there any changes?
No, we need to do the roll call.
Yes, thank you. So after, so can we have the roll call, please?
Chair quick.
Present.
Vice Chair Joe.
Present.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Wong. Commissioner Fang.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wong, I see your hand up as present. Thank you, commissioners. All present and accounted for.
Thank you so much. Next slide, I'm on the agenda is the Agenda Review. Do we have any comments from the commissioners or staff on the Agenda Review?
Yes, this is, good evening commissioners, this is Sam Fielding, staff. There is one change to the agenda for item 7A. The 401 East Millbury Avenue. The text that states signed ordinance amendment that needs to be deleted. This, this item will not require a signed ordinance amendment. So please strike a signed ordinance amendment.
Thank you. We have no minutes for this evening. The next item, number five, is public communication. And this is, if, is anyone in the audience or online that wishes to speak about someone, something that is not on Planning Commission meeting this evening? Do we have anybody? Bernadette?
I do not see anyone with their hand raised to speak from the public.
Thank you very much. Next item is the Consent Calendar. I do not see anything on the consent calendar. This is matters listed are considered to be fifteen. Therefore, we will just move on to the public hearing this evening. And the public hearing this evening is regarding 401 East Millbury Avenue. This is a modification to an approved specific development plan, design review modification of approved master sign program, sign ordinance amendment, although we are striking out the signed ordinance amendment, a parking variance to allow less than the required parking, adoption of the mitigated negative declaration, and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the construction of a new hotel, Moxie Hotel, at the Weston and Aloft Hotel site. So that being said, are we prepared? Is it Mr. Felding that will be presenting the staff report this evening?
Yes. Roscoe, are you able to share the presentation, please? Can people see the, the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Planning Commission Chair, planning commissioners, city staff, and members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Moxie Hotel project this evening. My name is Sam Fielding, the Senior Planner in the Community Development Department. The applicant, project team, city attorney, environmental review consultants, and staff are available to answer questions about the project this evening. Before beginning, staff would like to point out two small corrections in the staff report. The first one is on page 16, finding number three, second paragraph. The third sentence in that paragraph should be deleted. The, as was mentioned for the, on the agenda, the proposed new electronic billboard sign does not require an amendment to the municipal code and conforms to the municipal sign code. The second correctness, correction is on page 29, special condition C. The date on special condition C should be corrected to October 19th, 2020. Next slide. The subject of tonight's item is a modification to an approved specific development plan, design review, modification of master sign program and parking variance to allow less than the required parking and the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigated mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the new Moxie Hotel at the Weston and Aloft Hotel site. Next slide. This is the project site. The location of the proposed Moxie Hotel is the rectangular schematic located between the Aloft and the West Hotel. It's located just south of East Millbury Ave and to the east of Highway 101 and bounded by the El Portao Canal and Bay Shore Highway. Next slide. The proposed project would build a new six-story, approximately 70,000 gross square foot, 209-room Moxie brand hotel, part of Marriott. The project includes landscaping, hotel outdoor space amenities for guests and the public, tenant electric vehicle parking spaces, a new freestanding electronic billboard, entry sign, wayfinding, canopy, and hotel signage. This chart is a comparison of showing the existing hotels on the site. We have the Weston that is seven stories, approximately the height of about 73 feet and has 421 hotel rooms. The Aloft is six stories tall, six, six stories, 69 feet tall and 298 hotel rooms. The, the Moxie is proposed to be six stories tall with a height of 70 feet and have 209 hotel rooms. Next. Want to talk a little bit about the background of this project. On October 1985, there was approved, it was approved for a precise development plan by City Council for three hotels, the Clarion, the Weston, and the Element Hotels. On December 2010, the Clarion was rebranded and renovated to the Aloft Hotel along with conceptual approval for the new Element Hotel. The Element Hotel was never constructed as approved due to changing economic demand for hotel rooms. On April 2019, Moxie, the Moxie Hotel project application was received. And October 2019, planning commission held a study session where the, the request was for direction on design and two designs were provided by the applicant, applicant to planning commission. The plant, planning commission preferred design option two with enhancement. The CEQA initial study mitigated negative declaration document was prepared for the environmental review of this project and its public circulation was completed on June, the, the circulation period was between June 26th to July 27th, 2020. And then on September 22nd, City Council held a study session to provide input on the architectural design of the Moxie Hotel. And council recommended a revised design to revise the design to a less boxy appearance. Next. So the next series of slides are to show sort of the design evolution of the Moxie Hotel. So this was the first design that the applicant submitted, a very sort of contemporary style, had this, this wavy feature to sort of mimic and be in contrast to the San Francisco Airport and the the Millbury Bart Station. Basically, the idea is sort of the, the, the flight turbulence or flight pattern, you know, near, with the nearby airport. From this design, planning commission provided input and the architects came up with this design with, with enhancements. A little bit more of a boxy feature, but with angles to allow for views, view sheds looking toward the airport and then toward the southwest hills of Millbury. So that was the idea behind having this sort of shifted, shifting design feature of, of the rooms. Next slide. This is another elevation of that same design, but a night view of that, of the Moxie Hotel. You can see sort of the angled design of the rooms. So the City Council held a study session on September 22nd, based on the previous design, and they provided direction to the applicant to eliminate the boxy-like appearance of the structure and introduce more horizontal bay window elements similar to the Seattle Moxie Hotel. So the applicant revised the rendering and provided this a little bit more of a smoother facade, still having sort of bump out of the, of the bay window style to, to take advantage of the views, but less, less, a less boxy appearance. And this was based on input from the City Council. Next slide. These are the renderings, elevation renderings on that design that was presented to City Council. You can see that the, the design, the bump out sort of taper off in, in one direction. And on the other side, there's just three rows of those bayside windows. Next. This is the right rendering with the side elevations. You have the building elevation on the west and then on the east side. So finally, the, the applicant also submitted an alternative design. There, there was some staff and input to the applicant to, to provide look, look at adding more horizontal and vertical elements to the design. And so the applicants have provided this alternate design as a, as a possibility. And these are the side elevations. So this is the site plan for the master sign program modification. The text in, in red indicates where the entry monument sign will be coming off of Millbury Avenue, northern part of the parcel of the, of a site. Then the location of the wayfinding signage. There'll be canopy, building canopy signage on both sides of the sort of drive-through area of the, the drop-off point for the hotel. And then there's a building, a Moxie building signage on both sides, on the north and south sides. There's an existing monument billboard sign that would remain. It's located on the far southwest corner of the site. This is the large out front sign. And then the existing billboard sign, the Aloft sign would be replaced with a new electronic billboard sign. This is a detail of the master sign program modification, the new entry sign, wayfinding signage, building and canopy signs. The staff report on pages six and seven has more details on the sign sizes. These are images to give you an idea of what is proposed. The applicant is offering two sign, entry sign options on the existing monument sign located off of Millbury Ave. And staff, the reason there's an X indicated that the lower portion, lower graphic is that staff is recommending that the new entry sign be located on the existing Aloft monuments, not on the ground as, as the option was shown, an option to be. The recommended option is option one, having the, the entry sign located on the existing monument sign. And then you see the wayfinding signage. So this is the, shows you the existing billboard sign locations. This is the upfront billboard sign that would remain. And then the existing sign, Aloft sign would be replaced with a new billboard sign. This is going to be similar in height and area to the existing electronic billboard signs in the south. Next. So the current modification to the master sign program would remove the existing Aloft freestanding electronic billboard and install a new freestanding electronic billboard with the same existing height and location for the monument sign, but would change the sign display area to 672 square feet, 14 feet by 48 feet wide electronic billboard. And this is a graphic diagram of what that would, what that would look like. Next. So as part of the environmental review, CEQA environmental review for this project, staff had a consultant to put parking study that was prepared for this project. It's located as Attachment 10. Consultant was Fair Empires. The municipal code requirement for parking is one space per guest room. And the applicant is, you know, be proposing a very parking variance, there would be a net loss of 10 parking spaces. The total parking count would be 928 guest rooms and 883 parking spaces would be provided for the combined three hotels, the Weston, Aloft, and Moxie. The parking demand assessment determined that the demand rate at the Weston and Aloft was 0.85 spaces per room. So assuming the same rate for Moxie, the full hotel occupancy, including the 19 employee spaces, would yield the demand of 789 spaces. Therefore, the parking supply for guests would be 864 spaces, resulting in a 75% of, 75 parking space surplus. And so the applicant is requesting the parking variance to allow less than the required parking. The proposed project will not negatively impact parking demand at the project site. The staff is recommending approval of the parking variance. And the reason why is that this is a planned development site with the three hotels. It has sort of unique circumstances in that all three hotels are close, within close proximity to each other. And staff look at parking as a whole, as opposed by each individual hotel to maximize efficiency. Basically, in summary, there, there's, there's a, a, a greater supply of, of parking there when, when you look at all three hotels. And, you know, the, the, the rate, the parking demand indicates that the, the amount of parking that's available would be able to accommodate the Moxie Hotel as well as the other two hotels. Next. So the CEQA California Environmental Quality Act study was done and was determined that the, this project would require a mitigated negative declaration. The environmental study found that the project would not result in any significant unavoidable environmental impacts on the majority of the categories. Attachment five, CEQA mitigated negative declaration is the study that provides more detail on it. The impacts that were identified that would be reduced to a less than significant level through mitigation measures for the were basically identified for the category, categories below, which were air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, cultural resources, and tribal cultural resources. Attachment six has the mitigation and monitoring reporting program that would require mitigation measures for these four environmental categories that would reduce the impacts to less than significant level. Lastly, a, as was discussed in the parking analysis, due to the uniqueness of the site, there's three hotels in close proximity and they would be sharing the parking availability for the hotels. So staff is recommending a special condition for approval that prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the applicant must enter into shared parking agreement with the owners of the properties on which the Aloft, Weston, and Moxie in a form approved by the Community Development Director. This agreement shall, one, state that the 883 parking spaces shall be shared with any guest or employee of the Moxie Aloft or Weston, shall be accessible at all times. Two, the name is, he is a third-party beneficiary, and three, provide a means for ensuring adequate parking in the event of the sale of the Aloft or Weston separate from the Moxie. Next. So at this time, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the project by making the following motions to approve for the modification to an approved specific development plan, design review, modification of approved master sign program and parking variance to allow less than the required parking, to allow the development of a 209-room, approximately 70,000 square foot hotel based on the findings for approval in Attachment 12 and subject to the conditions of approval in Attachment 13, and including the staff corrections as presented tonight, and to recommend adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for a new Moxie Hotel at the Weston and Aloft site. But this concludes the staff presentation this evening. Staff, the applicant, project team, environmental consultants, and the city attorney are available to answer further questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Felding. Do any of the commissioners have a question for staff?
Commissioner Chair.
Commissioner Joe.
I mean, this, this is just a procedural question. I just wanted to clarify, so for tonight, what we're doing is recommending to City Council for approval on everything, or is there something separate? Like some, some aspects are separate, or? Or is all of this pretty much a recommendation to City Council?
Well, this would be a, a staff recommendation for the planning commission to approve the modific, the number one and number two parts to the project. So that would be the number one, the modification to an approved precise development plan, design review modification of master sign program, the parking variance. And then number two, the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Moxie Hotel. So this is planning commission's recommendation for approval.
Planning commission's recommendations for approval. So there's nothing, is there anything of this that we are actually approving or not approving at this point directly? Or is it all something that we're just forwarding up to City Council if, if approved on our side?
Roscoe, would you like to address that?
Sure, Commissioner Joe, to, to answer your question and City Attorney's Office, Jared Yan is available. I can clarify, but the action tonight is that the planning commission is going to be making a motion to approve as staff recommended, approve the project. And then as Mr. Felding had mentioned previously in his presentation, the project does not require an assigned code amendment. So that, the action, the final action would be rest with the planning commission. That being said, the City Council can bring up the project for consideration by the City Council, but the action is to approve tonight.
Okay, so the action is to approve, not to, because on the staff report, page 13, the bottom says staffer recommends that planning commission recommend City Council approval. And then the top of page 14 says staffer recommends that planning commission consider adopting the rest. So I just wanted to be clear on, so we are actually approving or not approving or, or what have you. We are taking action on the project and it can be recalled by City Council and most likely will be, that's.
That's correct.
Okay.
So I, I need further clarification on that. So we are recommending everything to the City Council, right?
This is, the staffer obligation is not to, it's not a recommendation. At one point, there was a signed code amendments, in which case that would.
That portion only, though, right?
Right. That no longer applies here. In that case, because it no longer applies, the, the action would rest with the City, I was, I'm sorry, action would rest with the planning commission.
Okay. I have one other quick question, if none of the other commissioners. Okay, so are, is the planning commission tonight going to approve the signage? Like the building sign that is new? The large one? That, the building sign that is going to fit on page seven?
Yes, through the chair, through the chair, this, this, the planning commission will be going to approve the master sign program modification that includes the electronic billboard that will replace the Moxie, existing Moxie Hotel, or the existing Aloft monument sign. So that is part of what you would be approving, the modification of the master sign program to allow that. Now, one of the conditions of approval is that the applicant will still be required to submit the master sign program modification, like signage for, for a permit. So they'll still need to submit a, a permit application for review by planning and building that is consistent with what the planning commission approves tonight. And, but that will be at the staff level of review and permitting approval. But the answer is yes, that, that does include a master sign program modification that includes that electronic billboard, the new one that will be located at the same site as the Aloft monument sign. So that'll be replaced with a new electronic billboard sign.
So is this a good time to ask, do, or wait until we get into discussion? Are we, is the city, well, Aloft is going to have an electronic sign and the city is going to have an electronic sign?
The, so there's the, there's an existing electronic sign to the south, which is the out front sign. So that's not changing.
So the large sign is going to stay? So the large sign is gonna stay, and now the group wants to have an electronic sign of their own?
Correct.
Okay. So, and there are two considerations that go into the electronic sign. There's first, the amendment to the sign code, and then there, there are also certain findings. Or I'm sorry, there, there are the, there's the amendment to the, the sign program, and then there are also some specific findings that are necessary for the billboard itself.
Okay, well, let's move forward. I definitely have questions, but I don't think this is the right time for it, so. Are there any other questions of, of staff at this moment? Commissioner Walt?
Question, so, one of the items and, and for commission review is about the parking variance. And so just curious about the shared parking use. What, what agreement or what makes us assured that they can have a shared parking agreement with the other hotels? And is that gonna be part of the condition of the permit?
Yeah, I can, I can take this question. Yeah, so the, currently, to the two hotels share the, the parking on the, on the site. With the new Moxie Hotel, that'll continue to happen, although, you know, given that three hotels would be sharing parking spaces with each other, we wanted to include a condition of approval that would that would require a shared parking agreement. On, just to, for, for, for the record, that the guests and employees of any of the hotel can use the spaces, whether they're close to the hotel that they're staying at, or working at, or, you know, if it's on another, on another side of the the parking space happens to be on another side of the property, that they can still access that.
And a follow-up question also is that to reduce parking needs, is there also a shared shuttle? Or a shuttle between the hotels and airport or barge station that they'd be able to have an agreement with or use, so that the rider, the occupants or hotel guests don't need to drive, that they can use the shuttle?
The applicants present tonight can answer that question. I, I believe that they have a presentation, and I think I could, could address that at that time.
Yeah, hey, Roscoe, the, the, the current Westin and ALOFT have a shuttle to the airport specifically that runs pretty much all, all day. So there is a shuttle service that's widely used by both hotels.
Okay, we can answer the question more in detail while we actually get a little further into the evening. I do have one more question of staff, though. Mr. Fielding. This shared parking that's gonna require a variance. Is the parking fly gonna continue to be there, and has that been added into the equation?
The, so I don't believe there's a park and fly, or at one point, there was a a business on the Westin that, that had that, that was using like about 20, 25 spaces for sort of a like a shared parking, or a, a parking rental, vehicle rental business, but that business is no longer operating there. And I don't believe there's a park and fly business operating with the the Western or the ALOFT at this time. Do you know, Kevin, if there is a park and fly operation at all with Westin and ALOFT?
There was at a time, the, the, the current state is, is very in flux, obviously, due to kind of the, the continued negotiations with them. But I would just say, it is something that we have the ability to turn on and off. There is one parking operator that controls the whole site. So for instance, if you ever had very high hotel occupancy and therefore high hotel guest parking, you would then limit the amount of spaces that we would be able to use for that other pool.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of staff on the staff presentation? There being none, is the applicant available to present the project, and that would be? Would that be Kevin that is gonna?
Yeah. Yeah, good evening, commissioners. I'll do a brief introduction from ownership's perspective and then introduce the design team here shortly. My name is Kevin Tizala, and I'm with the, I'm the development manager for Starwood Capital here in our San Francisco office. I quickly wanted to thank Roscoe and Sam for all the hard work on our application, particularly in the last few weeks. I know we had a, a long burn there, so thank you. Starwood Capital continues to value our partnership with the city of Millbrae through our ownership and operations of the ALOFT and Westin Hotels and their over 700 guest rooms and $5 million of annual TOT revenue. In early 2019, we proposed constructing a third hotel on the currently underutilized parking and courtyard space within the larger complex due to the outstanding occupancy that we had seen in 2018 and early 2019. Exactly, not exact, 12 months ago, in October of 2019, we had a planning session, a planning session with you commissioners. And then thereafter, in December, we hosted a community outreach meeting and also submitted our final design to the city. In June and July, the Millbrae published the final mitigated negative declaration. And in September, we hosted a city council study session. It was a third hotel, conceptually approved in 2010. However, since then, we've updated the product offering to better suit current trends and consumer preferences. And that offering is the Moxie Hotel. The proposed 209-key Moxie Hotel would complement the existing hotels and provide a differentiated offering to primarily transient customers through a smaller guest room footprint and playful social and community spaces. COVID-19 has devastated our 2020 performance, and we, we, we remain concerned with the recovery in particular business travel. I'm happy to report that the ALOFT reopened in September, but there's a long road ahead. This digital sign proposal and the future Moxie Hotel are critical lifelines to the complex that we, we hope to move forward as quickly as possible. I'm here to answer any more questions about some of the specifics. But I did want to just mention that in, in addition to the 209-key guest room hotel, we are also looking for approval of the, the proposed billboard of similar scale to the city-owned sign on the 101, which is about 55 feet tall and 45 feet long. I'm gonna turn it over to Ian with BDE to talk briefly about the proposed design and the evolution through the comments we've received from you all and from the city council as well, and some of the sustainable features of the Moxie.
Thanks, Kevin. Yeah, I wanna thank commission, thanks for making time for us tonight. I know that this has been a, a hard way to review projects and to collaborate, but I think that the city's been incredibly flexible and adaptable, and it's worked out well so far. And I also want to thank staff, has a really great report and very thorough and very concise, so it's gonna make my, my presentation all that much easier, so thank you, Sam. Possible to give Joseph, the project designer and project manager, the screen? I think we have a, a short presentation, is that? We have those capabilities? Okay, we'll zoom out a little bit. Here we go. So this design, as, as Sam mentioned in the staff report, is the, what you see on the screen is what came out of our meeting with city council, where they asked for a little bit more regular design that eliminated some of the cantilevered boxes that had been shown to planning previously and been part of our initial concept. Go ahead, next slide. We can skip this, this is all the stats for the project. Keep going. Here you can see some of the context for, for where we are, we're really nestled right between the Westin and the ALOFT. So while there wasn't necessarily a ton of things from the architecture of the Westin that we wanted to borrow for, from, there was a, a real regularity to the punched openings that we thought we could kind of speak to in the initial design and the subsequent designs, while still being interesting and creative and playful and youthful, like the Moxie brand really demands. Go ahead. Next slide. I, I think it was mentioned briefly in the staff report, but the driving concept for this project was how to maximize some of the views, since we're pretty much surrounded by the freeway and by the rest of the hotel campus. So we wanted to take some of these would have turned into bay elements and angle them to, to get views outwards and not to the most pinched portions of the, of the building. And so you can see here, looking south, angling back towards the hills and north through the gap between the Westin and the ALOFT. Oh, go ahead. This is that access point that was shown briefly when we looked at the sign diagram earlier, coming off the Bay Shore Freeway and the site entry. Next slide. A, a little bit more information in terms of where all of those sign samples that were presented earlier, where they're located on the site. You can see the existing two-panel digital billboard on the lower left there and the existing monument sign just above it to the north. Next slide. So for the purpose of this presentation, we're, you know, we provided two options, but as staff mentioned, they're, they're really recommending the option you see above the upper left-hand corner, where we integrate the sign with the existing ALOFT monument at the site entry point. Go ahead. Again, some of the images of the, the billboards and the relationships of the existing digital billboard with the proposed new digital billboard. Next slide. The purpose of this slide is to kind of illustrate the fact that the project is somewhat hidden between the two existing hotels and where we'll have vantage points to actually view the new project. So coming off the freeway, you'll have one view, and then it'll be hidden again before entering the site, and we get another straight-on view, which would be the picture on the top of the screen here. Go ahead. These are some of the samples of other Moxie products that we looked at. We, we really spent a lot of time looking at the Seattle project, which is the upper right-hand side. But middle-left, there's elements of all of these which we, which we borrowed from to make sure that we were still designing within the, the brand parameters, which is really targeting high-tech biotech, you know, short-stay guests coming from, from the airport. Go ahead. Here's some of the interior spaces and all of those samples that we showed just a second ago. We really wanted to include this just to show how vibrant and interesting and industrial and modern and kind of fun and youthful that the brand strives to be and the kind of character that we're trying to infuse into that space. It's really important that we achieve that because it differentiates this product from, you know, the surrounding Westin and the ALOFT. Next slide. A couple more samples of, of the ALOFT product with the angled bays and the staggered accent points and some of the highlight colors and lighting and kind of offset panels that we wanted to, to borrow and use. Next slide. This is a landscape plan for the project, showing the full landscape courtyard that abuts glassy first floor, amenitized lobby and fitness area and lounge. So that's pretty much all visually open to the, to the landscaped area, just to the, just to the north. And that area to the right that you see over there is the port crochet where the drop-off area, which is a slight drive up, since the whole property is, is raised up a little bit from predominant grade. This is the typical floor plan, showing all the units, very regulated design, as is typical with a hotel project, and giving another view of some of those bays that we're proposing and their angled views outwards. Go ahead, you can probably skip through these. And then a small kind of overlook roof deck just mainly as a, a meeting place, not highly amenitized, mainly as a, just a view, place to take in the view, go ahead. Some of the typical units that are in keeping with the, the Moxie brand, and a lot of their brand is driven towards that really fun communal space and more efficient room design. Go ahead. This is that original elevation that we reviewed, which I won't spend too much time on, just because staff did such a good job of comparing kind of the iterations that we've gone through here. Go ahead. Yep, the end panels, next slide. This is that second iteration that came from city's comments, kind of regularizing everything, making it a, a little bit more normalized. Next slide. Next slide. And then from, from staff's further comments received late last week, as well as, you know, third-party design review, there was a lot of interest in staggering some of the elements and creating some differentiating features for the top of the building that we think were beneficial, and we're really happy to, to work with staff to, to make those edits. And so this is our kind of quick turnaround proposal on how that could be achieved, that we, we think adds a lot while still kind of keeping a monumental entry that's got the taller massing. Next slide. And then we're gonna kind of quickly go through the rest of the slides, since I think the main point of what we wanted to present tonight was really those, those changes in the facade iterations. But here you can see the materials we're proposing, it's really an industrial kind of forward-looking, modern palette, really resilient materials, something that'll stand out a little bit against the other two hotels. Next. And then a brief section, just kind of showing the relationship of the first floor to the other units, go ahead. And then these renderings are of the iteration based on what the city asked us to study, so we haven't been able to incorporate that top-floor modification. But I think they really say a lot about the character and how this building's gonna be perceived from the, the neighboring viewpoints. Go ahead and cycle through these. Next. You can really see that active ground floor amenity space and outdoor space and, and how how good that could be, so. And I think that's it, I think we had, might have some miscellaneous slides at the end, but that's the majority of what, what we wanted to present today. Hey, I don't know, Kevin, is there any closing thoughts that you want to add to that?
Um, no, I just, just a couple of clarifications due to, you know, some questions that have already been asked. I just wanted to reiterate that the, the three, the, you know, the exist, two existing hotels and the proposed third do have the same ownership structure. So we are, you know, more than amenable to staff's recommendation of creating that parking plan should, you know, the city be concerned about a potential sale of one or more of the assets. And also on the, the signage, the billboard along the 101, the, there's no proposal to remove the city sign. The, the, the applicant signage would be for advertising of, of what is kind of under-advertised space with the two existing hotels and now the third, as long as some general advertisement and a revenue share program, as well as as long as some general advertisement and a revenue share program, as well as airtime for the City of Millbrae's kind of public announcements. So events and things like that will also be shared on on the billboard, but can answer more details when the commissioners have questions.
Thank you, Kevin. And thank you, Ian. That was a great presentation. I liked the original plan, but I like this one, too. Is there any questions of the applicant from the commissioners? Commissioner Wong, please.
Sure, I'll start. These hotels like the Loft and like the Smoxy Hotel, it appears to have very small room footprints for a unique set of travelers, less amenities. What would you say? How would you characterize the typical guest that comes to the hotel? How many days would they stay? And is there amenities like restaurants or food service or, you know, room service that caters to them? Or do they go typically go out and very active and jump on the bar train and go to San Francisco or they just lay over for the airplane? How would you characterize typical guests for the hotel?
Sure. I'm going to be careful not to overgeneralize because I'm sure there's there's a super wide variety, but in, you know, to give you a little bit of a feel for that customer compared to Weston or Aloft, it's usually a younger demographic. It tends to be a more price-sensitive demographic. So part of the reason why the guest rooms are a little bit smaller and the amenities are a little bit lower are it allows us to have a different price point amongst the three hotels. It tends to be a heavier skew, though there will be definitely business travelers who do stay at the Moxie. There will be more of what we call transient guests who are staying, you know, either visiting or just, you know, a guest of the City of Millbrae and in the Greater Bay Area. The, you know, as you kind of mentioned, the stay, the average stay is fairly low. So think, you know, one or two nights compared to, you know, four nights, it would be, it would skew towards the one or two. And the the offerings that we have on site for the Moxie specifically are more of a grab-and-go style cafeteria-bar setup. So there are, you know, drinks that we can serve on site, but they're they're more prepackaged meal offerings. And then obviously those guests can go over to the Weston Hotel and the restaurant there. But again, it's it's purposefully less amenitized because those customers are the ones who are going to be out kind of on Main Street in Millbrae, trying out the local restaurants.
So why I ask is just to get a feel for the circulation about, you know, if there are drivers, if there's parking, if they're staying long-term, or if they're ordering out for, you know, takeout and Uber Eats, or if they're trying to call an Uber car just to come and pick them up a lot. So it sounds like there'd be a lot more. What have you considered for the circulation for all those drop-offs and Uber Eats and Uber cars waiting to pick up passengers? Have you just?
Yeah. So so there's definitely a trade-off between parking and your your, you know, your ride-share services. So this, again, this hotel and their demographic will skew towards not renting a car and using those, you know, either the the, you know, Lyft Uber offerings for rides themselves or for the the delivery of food. We did provide a pretty large, what, you know, Ian described as the porridge share. So there's a staging area for drop-offs and deliveries. It's, you know, two two lanes wide, so there's easy access. And if we want, we can jump back to that visual. But in general, there, you know, there's easy access off Millbrae Avenue. There's, you know, the the entire parking lot is going to be considered holistically. So we'll have a very clear wayfinding and, you know, kind of a single parking operator that designates, you know, how the entire site is working together. So it'll be thought comprehensively. But but to answer your question, yeah, there will be some drop-off and things like that from those ride-share customers and food delivery services.
Right. So that would be offset the small reduction in parking spaces needed. And then also a good clear circulation path would be beneficial. I noticed that there was, I visited there today and the parking lot flow went from the Loft over to the Westin, so are able to cut through and then go out to the Old Bay Shore Highway and then come out that way. This is beneficial.
Yeah. Yeah. And just to speak real quickly to the the parking variance. So the the study that we did was using actual empirical data. We went out to the site and this was this was pre-COVID. So we went on our most busy days of essentially Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday nights. We found that at this site, when you include, you know, the workers, all the 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 park-and-fly and the customers, we had a maximum parking occupancy of 0.85 stalls per one hotel room that was occupied. So how that translates across the site is, as staff mentioned, we would still have an access of about 75 spaces in our absolute worst-case scenario. That worst-case worst-case scenario assumes all three of the new, all three of the hotels, including the Moxie, would be 100% occupied. And it also assumes that folks at the Moxie would be parking at that same 0.85 to one ratio as the Weston and and the Aloft. But we've known from a study that we did on a similar Moxie property in Denver that the percentage of guests that are staying with us at Moxie who do have their own car is significantly less, more like half of the guests. So we we had assumed that a standard Moxie guest would park at about 0.5 to 0.4 to one occupied guest room. So again, the the study and the variance are for a worst-case scenario. We still have an excess of 75 spaces and that we feel is pretty conservative in terms of the actual needs of of the site and our parking needs.
Any more questions, Commissioner Wong?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions?
Actually, I've got one more question.
Okay.
I'm a little bit curious about the lighting. So you know, sometimes if you're in an airport or tall buildings that require lights on top of the buildings for air traffic and recognition. Can you speak a little bit about what restrictions or what requirements are required for airports for tall buildings near the landing strips?
Yeah, of course. So the the short answer is that we we've gone through a thorough process with the FAA. Even though we are super close to the airport itself, the reason why we can go up to six and seven stories is just due to the flight paths themselves. So it's not just proximity, but where you are with the the predominant flight paths. They've evaluated both for height of the building, for the crane, for the construction phase, which will be higher than the building, and also for what they kind of call lights or distractions, reflections, for lack of a better term. So that the current design incorporates all that and we don't need to have special lights because of our, the nature of the hotel not being within that flight path.
So when I think of a kind of a Moxie theme or kind of a new thing for younger people to attract them, I think of Moxie like neon signs or purples or or pinks. Have you incorporated any of these neon lighting elements or any of those color schemes into your design?
Yeah, definitely. It I'll let Ian jump in here, but it's primarily in kind of some of the accents and obviously in the signage. But Ian, did you want to talk a little bit about how the lighting is integrated into the facade itself?
Yeah. So we we really did want to use lights because it's such a big part of how the other Moxie buildings brand their architecture. You know, they all have different styles, but they, a lot of them lean on that accent pink and then the lighting that goes with it. And so one way that we thought would be good to do that, other than just having the trademark Moxie signage and lighting that, would be to have panels on the main portion of the building face that were the branded color and then having the neon lights really illuminate those panels and highlight those locations. So if you look at any of the facade diagrams or the facade renderings that we've done, they all incorporate some element of these staggered vertical neon lights that kind of shift with the alternating gray panels in that portion of the facade. Alternatively, we have a kind of wider, longer light element that's meant to highlight the verticality of each of the stacked bays. Now that we've made that change away from the the can-levered boxes. So yes, we've tried to lean in very heavily into that kind of Moxie branded lighting.
And then, you know, given that all these different themed hotels or different three hotels are in really close proximity to each other, and if Moxie has a very distinct style, how do you prevent it or what considerations have you given so that it doesn't clash with the other styles of the other hotels nearby?
So I I was sort of getting at this a little bit in that the Weston is a very simple structure, but it's got very regularized punched openings. So even though we're doing something that's really flashy, you could view this building as like the the little sister to the Weston. It's very regular. It's got its normal openings, punched openings, but it's just got a very flashy skin on it that makes it different in some way. I think the Aloft is a little bit more similar in its conception. It's kind of a middle ground in its, what it's attempting to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any of the commissioners that have any comments that have popped up?
May I?
Yes, Commissioner Wong.
Hi. Yes. At with applicant, could you go over the common space a little bit with me? Because I'm looking at your plan, AP301. I see coffee bar. I see welcome. I see lounge. I see library and plug-in fitness center. The rest of it is surface-based. Is that correct?
Kevin, do you want to take or do you want me to?
Go ahead, Ian.
Yeah. So all of that amenity space is all located on that entry area and the Moxie brand kind of basis, their check-in on approaching the bar as the check-in. So that that bar area is where you would come in and pick up your room card and get any information for the surrounding area. And then as you move back into the space, you have a kind of differentiated seating that's a little more broken out, maybe a little bit quieter. And then it's capped at the end with that separate fitness use. But it's it's all centrally located on that first floor to keep it separate, other than the the small lookout deck on the roof.
We'll get to the roof in a moment. So the cafe bar, tell me what is available there.
I don't know, Kevin, if you know exactly.
So so on the on the drink side, I think kind of full-service bar, you know, cocktails, beers, wine, et cetera. It's more of a kind of a coffee offering typical of a cafe during the day in the
No alcohol.
Sorry about that?
No alcohol is being served.
No, no, there is.
Oh, there is?
Yes.
So it's a full bar. There's there's could be a bartender.
Yeah. Yeah. I think as Ian was kind of saying, think of as the an all-inclusive kind of check-in concierge, who's also your barista and bartender, depending on what time of day it is. And then we'll have kind of what I call a grab-and-go offering. So just kind of prepackaged snacks or things that you heat up as opposed to made-to-order offerings on the on the food side.
It's rather limited, huh?
Yes.
And you don't have a a full-time bartender either, meaning people don't come down there and get drinks even, you know, in the evening.
Oh, no, they definitely do. So depending on what time of day, right? Depending on how many folks are going to be checking in, you might have two, three. It really all depends on kind of the the time of day, but but for sure, this is a bar offering that will be operating pretty much all day and night because there is combined use of the bar and the check-in.
And then there's a kitchen in there, obviously, so it doesn't serve any hot meal. It's only prepackaged fruit, like, you know, sandwiches.
Exactly. Very basic offering. So it's just a kind of a prep kitchen. For instance, you know, there's a pizza that you could have heated up, but it's not going to be, you know, a pizza oven on site. That would be kind of a good example of of the trade-off of of what this offering is.
Okay. And so the roof deck, it's just, you know, a little early, you mentioned it's just for observation, for views only. But any surfaces, any bar up there, people could sit there for a couple of hours, get it, you know, spend 50 bucks on drinks, anything at all?
No, we really thought of in in terms of that side of things that the the indoor-outdoor nature of the lobby. So that entire side, the north side of that, the lobby area is going to kind of open up. And I think we have a fire pit out there. Ian can talk a little bit more about the 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 program specifically. But in terms of guests, but also the public, we're really focusing the energy on that ground plane because we have that awesome secluded courtyard space. And and a lot of the logic there is due to just site factors. So noise from the highway and the airport, we're a little bit more protected and can take advantage of the a little bit of the isolation and tranquility we get in that courtyard compared to that rooftop.
So how big is that? How big is that rooftop deck space, square-footage-wise?
Ian, I think that's it's limited by code, but probably only a couple hundred square feet, right?
Yeah. I mean, it's basically limited to make sure that we can meet egress requirements up there. So I think it's, you know, around 700 square feet, but that includes pathways. So.
It includes what?
The pathways to to
Two means of legal egress, elevator, elevator lobby, that sort of thing, right?
Yes. Yeah.
And then you said what, 700 square feet?
I think approximately, yeah. But you know, we're still tweaking design, but we're, yeah.
Do you have a full plan of that roof deck?
Yeah, we can bring it up on the screen. Joseph has permission to to bring that up again.
I'd like to see it. It's also on your L2 landscaping plan, isn't it?
Yeah, here we go.
All right. So you've got a couple elevators, right, in the towards the middle, right, where you have the sectioned line? That's your elevator. And it's just, right now, it's just landscaping and, you know, somebody, yeah, circular orange-looking thing. What are they? Can you blow it up a little bit? Sorry.
I think these are seating elements.
So just seating elements, just bar stools and stuff?
Yeah, small groups.
Okay, up here we go. All right. Where your cursor currently is, what is that whole area?
Yeah, we have to maintain some large portions of the roof for utility for the all the systems that serve the the building. And so some of these areas will be screened off and and set aside for for that as the design of the building systems progresses.
So those are basically roofing elements, roof elements such as mechanical and, you know, boiler, maybe that sort of thing, plumbing, that sort of thing.
And condenser units. Yeah.
Okay. So it really looks like the amount of usable space, it's really not that much. I mean, when you say 700 square feet, I don't think there is that much, really.
Yeah, it's pretty limited up here.
And and why is it limited to only that many square feet? Is it, does FAA regulation? What is it?
No, with with an A-type occupancy, like this would be considered, you have to provide a certain amount of square feet per person or assume a certain amount of people per square foot, I should say. And if we approach 50 people or over 50 people, it triggers the need for a second accessible egress. And since we already anticipate having so much congestion on this roof with the further design of the systems, we really want to limit ourselves to the one staircase. And it doesn't lend itself to reaching to the other side. Furthermore, I want to reiterate something that Kevin said, which is we really anticipate people fully utilizing this really, if you scroll up, you can see this background in gray to the north of the plan, super lush and built-out kind of outdoor amenity. Super lush and built out kind of outdoor amenity space. There's a big fire pit right there in the
I understand that, you know, what I was hoping to, here is what I'm trying to get at. But by the way, is the elevator accessible at the rooftop level?
Yes.
Okay, so you still mean, so you still need two levels of egress, two means of egress, meaning two sets of stairway in order to meet fire code, right?
Believe the fire code allows for the one set of egress as long as the occupant load does not exceed, does not meet or exceed fifty.
You know, I mean, the meat of this roof space, you know, the that big block in the middle, it's where you actually use it for mechanical and other plumbing and roofing elements. Could they be moved elsewhere?
Not easily, the the program is is pretty slimmed down. This is a pretty tight building in terms of all of the programmatic elements in the back of house. So there's not a lot of other options available to us. I I don't, I just think that I'm sure there's some way to make the roof deck bigger, but not without great cost.
Yeah, here's what I'm getting at. I I think this these this hotel design. I'm really hoping that this roof deck would be a gathering place for people. I mean, you mentioned fifty people occupancy. It could serve as a limited size restaurant, maybe a roof deck bar where you can play late night music, people can gather and spend some some dollars. I mean, I know that your demographic of travelers are younger. I still remember the days when I was young that I would like to go onto a roof deck and, you know, spend a few dollars getting drinks and, you know, listen to jazz musics. So, you know, that would bring some revenue opportunity to your hotel as well as the city. And I think that roof, you know, that roof deck could be a good space for that.
Yeah, we'll we'll continue to kind of work through this plan. Obviously, you know, there's there's some development to be had. But we want to be really sensitive to the brand and the way that it operates. And in general, they're very prescriptive about the limited option, the I should say, limited venues. And and so the idea here is to make sure that you make one awesome venue as opposed to two that aren't as powerful, that aren't as energetic due to kind of dispersion. And it allows us efficiencies on the operation side, you know, fewer bartenders because of that, you know, just optimizing the guests in one location. So we, I I think we hear you in terms of wanting to kind of be more thoughtful about the programming up here. But I do want to make sure we're we're cautious about adding food and beverage outlets, you know, to other areas of the property because it just it just is not necessarily the way that these tend to operate. And there are a lot of concerns as Ian was kind of starting to lay out of what things mean. So if you're serving drinks up here, now you have, you know, six foot glass walls and a second foot, a a second means of egress. And and there's just a lot that would need to be worked out. But but that's kind of, you know, we hear the comment and and we'll continue to think through it as we progress through the design.
Yeah. What is the average room cost that you're expecting?
That's a really hard question to to answer right now, but I would say in the two hundreds.
That's not very low. I don't know. That's not exactly economical in the sense that there sure there there are more sort of more budgeted hotel room there in that vicinity. But obviously, yeah, being a new hotel and all, two hundred dollars a room is still a pretty good deal. I would imagine your travelers would be able to afford a meal there. They would certainly be able to afford having drinks late at night and having a meal at your hotel. I think it is an important element that you guys need to reconsider. I understand that there's a branding and then there is the sort of the traditional line of thoughts, you know, when it comes to the moxie brand, what type of amenities and services that you would offer? But, you know, this could be a missed opportunity, not only for your hotel, but as well as for our city in terms of revenue. Chair quick for yours.
Are you done, Commissioner Feng?
For now, unless I can think of others.
Okay. I don't have everyone in front of me right this moment. Any other commissioners that wish to ask any questions? Seeing none. I have a question, can we go on to the signage or are there any other questions with the applicant? No, okay. I have concerns about the signage. I like what staff has recommended on having the two signs, the aloft and the moxie on one monument sign. I'd be interested to see how the other commissioners feel about another electronic sign. I I just am wondering if they're going to conflict with one another because they are very close to one another and the different heights and the traffic whizzing by there. Can you explain why you really need another electronic sign?
I don't want to jump in before you you ask the other commissioner, so I I can talk about the second sign after there's maybe the the first question you asked.
Do I see anyone else?
Kathy.
Maureen's name.
Maureen.
This is starting to sound like discussion and we haven't done public comment yet. Okay, so I think us weighing in comes in later.
We can do that. Okay, then there's no other questions at this time.
Pick it back on that question, sorry, Commissioner, so Chair quick, you don't mind. So the electronic signage that you guys proposing, what sort of messaging would you put up there? Is it just messaging and promotion for your own hotel? Or is it other types of promotion as well?
So there would be three options for for programming and there's not a specific allocation to the three. One would be for advertisement for the hotel complex. So for either food and beverage opportunities or the hotels themselves. The second is general advertisement. So, you know, some of the imagery showed some concepts in there. It could be local events, businesses, whatever. And the third would be an allocation towards public service announcements for the city of Millbrae. So for, you know, your local parades, events, festivities, anything like that.
Is it, is it a paid service? That means the city have to pay you to get that?
No, so the city is a part, there's a revenue share that will part of the kind of the greater business terms of the hotel. That's my understanding that the city council will be brought into and and has been brought into with our conversations with staff thus far. But the the public service announcements are part of that agreement as a baseline. So they're they're expected and part of the agreement each year.
Okay, can you go into a little bit further into those agreements? Those especially the public announcement as well as the general advertisement?
Yeah, so the so the public announcement typically, so we're talking about a digital billboard. So we're, you know, scrolling through content. And usually the way they describe this is just minutes on an hourly cycle. So these aren't static in the sense that you you have one advertisement for you for a an hour, they think about the the traffic speed and kind of cycle through a purchase program. And so essentially, when Millbrae, and and I think, you know, Sam and and Roscoe and Jared are all working through a little bit more of identifying this specific term within our agreement. But the idea would be to put several minutes in an hour and certain phase and certain periods of the year when you all want to do that. And we're we're kind of very amenable to adding those those minutes of public service announcements to kind of key hourly days that you all identify.
Okay, what about the revenue sharing with the city hall?
Yeah, so essentially, it's structured in a way not too dissimilar with the the city owned sign where there is a, there's a kind of a base payment is when the the sign is approved to get the cash flow starting. And then once the sign is operational, a certain percentage of revenues will be shared between the operator, the owner, so in this case, Starwood Capital, and then the the city of Millbrae.
Okay. Any specific you can share number wise, you know, what's revenue impact is going to look like?
Yeah, the the, you know, I I guess I would say that the the number that the city should expect in revenue will be over a hundred thousand dollars a year. This is based on projections that that, you know, mimic operating revenues of the city owned sign in in pre covid. So there's a little bit of a of a blip here because of, you know, less traffic. But we think once this is operational and built out, we're talking about hundreds of thousands, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or more of revenue on an annual basis to the city.
Because, you know, out of your package, I don't remember seeing a FIR, a financial impact report or revenue.
Yeah, I don't think that.
I I think it'll be interesting to see that.
Okay, I think that the the findings before the commission tonight are are relatively limited to the the necessary findings for the design review and the variance and the amendment to the sign program. So I think city staff is working with the applicant to assess the financial impacts of the hotel. And I think that the the specifics of the the deal with the sign in particular will will go before the council when as the sign will be operated in under an agreement between the the city and the operator or the city and and Starwood. So those
Is that right?
So we've we've discussed some key terms that 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 will go into the agreement, but we have not drafted a full agreement yet.
I see.
Is there? Is there anyone that would like to speak under the public comment? Renadette, do we have anyone that would like to speak?
I have no one with their hands raised at this time, Chair. I have no one at this time with raised hands.
Thank you. So there are no other comments during public comment. Can we request that the public comment period be closed? Votes?
Sure, motion to close public comment.
Okay. Would you like to take a, could you please take a vote for Renadette?
Chair Quick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Joe?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Feng?
Aye.
That's five to zero to close other comments.
Thank you very much. Now do we have more discussion from the commissions?
I I I have a small question for Council Ian. Do we get to see any of the financial impact of this hotel at all before we make a decision?
No.
I I believe that the the planning commission's role here tonight is to discuss the the findings, the specific findings in in the municipal code around the amendment of the precise development plan, the variance for parking, the the billboard itself and the designer review permit. And I don't believe that the that any of those have financial components to them. So that was not part of the package that that staff prepared tonight.
Chair Quick?
Joe, please.
Thank you. So I I I I'd like to just address, I'll just go through and address the points that were that staff is asking us to consider because I think that's important. So in terms of the amendment, the specific development of, sorry, the modification to this for the specific development plan, I'm fine with that. In terms of the parking variance, I'm fine with that as as well. I think that it's shown that with the just the trends of the current existing hotels that that are there with that, I think it was point eight five percent occupancy at the highest and that, I mean, parkings, parking per occupancy at the highest. And then with the moxie brand being probably less, even less in terms of parking per unit, I think that that's sufficient. So I don't have a problem with the fact that there are ten less, I think. Even if however you do it, however we calculate it conservatively, and if mox, the moxie brand is really catering to the younger, you know, younger set, however you want to define younger, I think not having as many parking spaces should be fine. Coming from two dot, you know, having two daughters that I had to force to get a license, driver's license, because it's beneficial. They don't like to drive, my daughters at least didn't want to drive. So I think that's fine, I'm fine with the parking variance. I, in terms of the design review, I would concur with Commissioner Quick, but I think I was fine with the previous design. I think the newer design, personally, I feel like it's getting busier and busier and I don't actually like it as much. But I do, I am aware of city council's preference and other people's preferences and in terms of trying to make it a little bit more pop, a little bit more and and be more exciting. So I think I'm okay with it as it is designed, whether it be the second or the third. I actually prefer the sec, if I had to choose between the second and the third, I would say I prefer the second. Again, because I I feel like at some point, having too many elements can all actually make it seem a little bit less nice, a little bit less sophisticated. You know, I know we're not trying to go for fancy, but I'm saying there's something about elegant simplicity that I think is the and with modern looks that actually less is sometimes more. So that's more of my preference in terms of the design review. In terms of the mitigated negative declaration with the mitigation monitoring reporting program, I'm fine with that as well. I think I would like to leave that to, I think the staff are working it out with the applicant in terms of what the they're working on in terms of the applicant in terms of the parking program itself. I think that's my understanding of it. So with those possible mitigation efforts and looking through the booklet that was prepared in terms of possibly, you know, mitigation of any possible effects, I'm fine with that. So I'm I'm fine to adopt that. With the master sign program, I I would say the having the additional digital sign, I'm not a fan of it, just off the highway because you have a proximity wise, if you're driving on highway one oh one, it's pretty fast. And so to have Millbrae and then you have a sign, sign, you know, it's it's bright and it's about the same. To me, I'm not, I'm not really a fan of it. I get if it's, you know, if it brings more revenue and the the commissioners are more you know, willing for that and city council really wants that, I have no control over it. But I would just say personally, I'm not a fan of having another sign that looks, it sounds like it's going to be exactly the same. I mean, similar size to what we currently have. And even that, honestly, I get a little distracted when I'm driving and I'm getting off Millbrae exit. And with all the construction and stuff going on, so it is a little bit much for me. And then the other thing regarding the sign program, I would say the monument sign, I know there was one, the entryway sign, there was a sign where I think there were two options. So there was one where the moxie sign would be directly underneath the aloft. And then there's one where it would be on the ground. And I would actually like to see it where there's maybe if there's a way to consolidate it a little better, because I feel like both both methods is don't really. I don't know, they don't, they don't mesh very well or or something, it doesn't look, it looks almost like you added a sign to an existing sign, which is what is actually what is happening. But I think there, if there could be a better way of handling that, I'd appreciate that. So those are my comments with regard to what staff is asking us to consider tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis, do you have comments?
I could pretty much do pretty much what Jean just said. On the design, I I did still like that first design. Can you explain on the latest iteration that we received that looks like it has, I want to say it's black or just an even darker color on the horizontal? Can you explain that just a little bit more?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So with the last round of comments that we received, that in the form of a third party design review, there was a strong desire to differentiate the top of the building. But we didn't, we already have a lot going on and we didn't want to introduce a new material or But we didn't, we already have a lot going on and we didn't want to introduce a new material or a new color. Uh, we already kind of recognized that it was heading towards busy and that was not our goal. Um, so we took the darker, um, panel materials that were already on the end caps of the building, the short thoughts. And we let them come up and wrap around the corner at the top of the building, uh, in order to create that. So I, I think it's a fiber cement panel, uh, in that location, uh, that's just a kind of charcoal, uh, paint color. Um, so it's the same materiality as the greater plain of gray, uh, just a darker color to help differentiate it.
Okay. Um, of those two last choices, I think I like the one with the darker elements better. But like, like Jean said, you know, the city council prefers the new design, so that's fine. Um, I'm fine with the parking plan. We don't need all those parking places. Uh, same with the mitigated, negative declaration and the monitoring program. And, um, I'm, I think I'm okay with another electronic billboard. I think I'm okay with it. It's another opportunity. It's an opportunity and I, I'm not sure. I, I don't, I don't, if Caltrans doesn't think it's a distraction, because they're, you know, they're going to weigh in on this if they haven't already, it, I'm okay with it. So. And, um, just a few more, just to, to remind us that this isn't a full service. Yeah, they walk into the Westin and find a full service hotel if they want to have a meal and not go anywhere else. I'd rather they come across the freeway and go into Millbrae and have dinner. So I'm kind of glad they can't have a nice meal in the hotel. All they can do is grab a sandwich. So that's just fine by me. And on the roof deck as well, um, it's not, it, we don't need to add extra things to their brand. We shouldn't be telling them how to run their business. I mean, like I said, if people want more options for dining, it's literally in the parking lot, all across the way. But, um, so I, I think it's fabulous. I would love to have two, 200 plus more hotel rooms in town. I'm glad you guys still want to build it despite COVID. Um, so thank you. That's it.
Uh, Commissioner Wong, any comments or have you made all your comments?
Trying to make sure I unmute. Okay, so, um, yeah, for every, uh, variance that we grant, you know, we really want to see what the impacts are and mitigate provide mitigation measures for any offsets of, uh, loss of non-compliance with these city codes and, um, so forth. Um, but it does look like they provide sufficient justification for, uh, not requiring the, uh, required parking, parking. So I'm fine with that. Um, the signage, I think, uh, my biggest, my biggest issue and not necessarily with the project itself. But if you look at the, uh, south view from 101 north and looking at that sign, it's just a mess. This is like the biggest blige in our city. And when you come up from highway 101 and you take off that Millbrae Avenue exit, you just see all this mess of, um, unlandscaped areas and, uh, you know, the telephone lines are right in front of the sign and it's just not cleaned up. And, and I can see if there's for the hotel itself, uh, applying for a neg deck, can understand that. But just in terms of this property, this view, and I know it's, it may be the Caltrain right, Caltrans right away. And it's not their property, but if we can at all work together with developer or come up with some suggestion or plan or use some of that, DIR monies to just even make suggestions about how to clean up this and work with the city or give it to Caltrans and ask for a grant to make, ask them to clean that up. Then that would provide a lot better image, not just for the hotel, but also for our city. So I'm asking Roscoe and Sam and, you know, our city staff, uh, just, if you can work with Caltrans or put it in their head, apply for a grant or apply for some way to clean up this area to make, uh, people coming into our city, make it feel like, you know, uh, these, these, this is a nice place to be. And I want to come off this off ramp and visit this nice city and this nice hotel. I think that's the biggest issue I have. Is there anything, I guess, something maybe later for Roscoe and Sam to consider, but again, if Kevin and Ian, if you can help at all make suggestions on how to clean up this view. So you can actually see the sign or, you know, make it clear that the landscape can, is cleaned up. So it can accentuate the sign and accentuate the hotel. Uh, that'd be a positive founder of this project for the city.
Okay. Commissioner Fung?
I'm glad we have a new hotel and I'm also glad we have a new billboard. Um, you know, um, I hope there's more detail to the plan that we can look at, but, uh, I guess we have what we have in front of us. So, um, like I said, I'm, I'm glad we have a new hotel and a new billboard. I think it's fine. I don't think we need to worry too much about the, this being a distraction. Caltrans will do their due diligence and do a good job at it. I'm glad it's here.
Okay, um, that being said, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Joe, probably a hundred percent, including, uh, the electronic sign. Uh, I, I think they're distracting. The one that is there went up and I think it's cluttery and clumsy, and I would really hate to see another one unless they did something with the one that's there now. I'm very happy about the hotel going up. And I too am excited that they're going to go ahead and build. So I'm okay with everything that is here except for the electronics side. I think I really prefer the one that is on the front page. I prefer something, uh, that's not quite so cluttery as what came in, um, on attachment number four. I, I think it got a little too much cluttery. So those are my comments on the design. I liked the, the boxes. I thought it fit in with the coming up times. Um, it was a little bit more modern. It was, it just had a, a newer look to it. But, um, since the city council didn't like it, wow, we're not the final say. But I, 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 I do say, um, you, you really did a wonderful job in a short period of time. So, um, I really do appreciate that you have done all this work. So, um, can I get, um, a motion, uh, to, um, approve, um, the modifications and move them on to the city council, um, as was described at the beginning, because we're not really quote approving anything. Is that correct?
So this action is to approve the, uh, the, adopt this resolution, uh, granting all of these approvals. So this is an approval. Um, it, it, the council does have the ability to call it up if, for example, it wants to review the, the design review.
Okay.
So it, it may be that the council does see that, uh, consider this further, but this is, uh, the, the planning commission tonight is approving the project.
Okay, that being said, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Make a motion to approve the resolution that's attached. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Different components of the.
Why don't you just read the front page?
Well, it's the same basic thing. Approve the resolution of the planning commission, approving a design review permit for a modification to an approved specific development plan, design review, modification to an approved master sign program and parking variance to allow less than the required parking for the construction of a new hotel, the Moxie Hotel at the Weston and Aloft Hotel site.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Can I have, or so are we're voting on that whole package together because I'd like to actually, um.
Write it out. Uh, we can.
Or, and then also with the design review, I think we had the new one and, and we had the proposed second one. And then we had a new one that came in. So I think we need to be specific about that one at least.
Can, um, can you please show us, um, all the three proposals then, Steph?
Uh, yeah.
Or maybe just the two, it seems like, because I, uh.
Well, there was the one that came originally and.
Right. Uh, it would be the first two.
Can we see the picture, please?
Roscoe, could you share, uh, show that, uh? Let's see, I can. Can try it. Again. Or I could share it.
I, I.
Do people see it now?
Yes.
See a screen.
Okay. You see the presentation?
Yeah.
So the, this is the, um, revised rendering based on city council input.
Okay.
And then, and then this is the alternative design. So it would be, uh, you know, planning commission deciding whether this is the design they want to approve or, or they want to approve the alternate design, alternative design.
So how do we want to modify? I can modify, I can get rid of my motion, make another one, but what do you want to do? Is it only the design we need to pull out?
Or maybe, um, yeah, so maybe.
And design?
Yeah, keep your motion, but just design, propose which design you're voting on, I guess, that you like to forward.
Why don't we just take a vote for which one to move forward?
Personally, um, I would, I'd like something in between. The new attachment four, I think is way too busy. And I think a little bit can be added to the first one. Anybody else have comments on that?
I'm not going to design a fourth option.
No.
That's what you're asking. Something in between the two would be number four. Not going to do it.
You know, I, I'm, I'm sure the city council would want to look at. I, I'd go with the original one, that one. I'm not getting a lot of comments.
Oh, I think I already said that I would, I would prefer this one to the, I, what's hard is that this one has a rendering that looks nice. And then you have the one that just came in and doesn't have a rendering. So I think we need to kind of keep that in mind too. So I'm fine with either my preferences for this one. So whatever the, the majority.
Oh, which one is your preference? The new one?
Line 10.
The one that's up right now. That's not the new one. The new one, you can tell the newest one is the one with the dark top.
I'm in favor of this, uh, second one. Just give a reason why. There's a lot more contrast. It has, breaks up the massing. It has the different color shadings and then also it has this pink that's on, that neon that's on top or in the, in the drawings, it's pink. In this, uh, show here, it's purple, but it just pops out. And it's, it gets a little bit more exciting or interesting. Um, whereas the other one, it may look like it's, it'd be like you're looking straight on it might be just like one big massive, uh, building. It doesn't, has as much contrast.
Um, I, I have a question on this. This one here that's up now, does it still have, and I'm having a hard time seeing it, the pop out windows? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, I'm okay then. I thought the pop out windows were a great feature of that whole look, so. So Maureen, you want to give it another try?
Well, I don't know.
You have a consensus?
I don't know. Anders, did you say which one you prefer?
Yeah, I think the, uh, the one that, oops, go back, the one with the little black corner. Yeah, I think this is fine. But I, you know, I like to see it more of a sort of a, you know, isometric view so I can get a better sense of it. You know, looking at a, a 2D, you know, rendering like this, drawing like this is, it's pretty difficult. Um, especially for a pretty large building, six, seven story high.
Agreed.
It's hard to conceptualize how is it really going to get implemented and built by looking at this.
Yeah, there's a good 3D rendering on AP 9.03. A more realistic drawing.
Where is that?
AP 9.03.
That, that one doesn't have the distinctive, uh, pop out on top.
All right, right.
So is the consensus to push this one forward?
Yes. That's what I'm hearing.
Okay. And is that the only one that we were, oh, then the sign, what's the?
And the sign.
So how do we feel about the sign and, and staff?
The digital sign or which one?
The bit, the billboard, yes.
The digital one?
Yes.
Okay. I say build it.
I say no.
I would say no.
Commissioner Wong?
I have, uh, no preference. My, my idea is just clean up that whole area.
It's kind of an important vote if you get what I mean.
That's okay.
Remember the city itself is right now negotiating a plan for it. I'm going to guess the council wants it. So if we're at two to two it with a, I'm not sure, perhaps that is a yes.
So I think we should know that we're not in favor of.
Yeah, I think it's easy to say it as a yes.
They can do what they want, but it, it's not something, and Commissioner Wong is, doesn't like, like the one that's there because.
So let's talk a little bit about, let's talk a little bit about the reason why you, you know, Commissioner Joe and, and Chair Quigg didn't like it, right? Because it is a distraction.
It's cluttery.
Cluttery?
It's cluttering. I, I just don't like a lot of neon digital signs. I think that's not the, it kind of goes against the character of what we, like, it, it's my same thing that I have an issue with too many, too much, too busy, makes it feel actually a little bit cheaper. And I'm afraid that for the sake of having extra revenue, we're actually maybe giving up a little bit of our, you know, the character. And I'm not a great fan of the sign that's there, even if it gets cleaned up underneath, you know, I, I think it's just kind of. So that's my, my thing with it. If it's going to happen and going forward, it's fine. I just think that it's, I just wanted to make sure to voice that, my, uh, you know, my hesitation about it and reluctance about it. And I'd like to make sure that goes on the record. I, I really had something important.
I totally agree.
I would say that, uh, yeah, I would agree that if there's the clutter, because it is messy area and just adds more to the mess. So I'm not in favor of it, but if they did clean it up and they really wanted that and they cleaned up the area, then, uh, I, I would say yes. But as it is now, it's, it's such a mess there. I would say no.
Question to staff, which point are we modifying here? How do we?
Yeah.
How do we communicate this bit in a, in a motion?
You're referring to the design?
This is the master sign.
The design we, we've sorted out. We, we're talking about the digital billboard now.
That's the sign program.
Is it the whole sign program? That's what I mean. There's a whole lot of other signage.
Sure.
That looks horrible. I'm sorry, but you just brought up, and it has nothing to do with Caltrain. But when you look at, at that, it means absolutely nothing. You cannot read it. And then you're mixing that existing and that, they're looking at that and they're not looking at the loft. I'm sorry, it, it, less is better on signage. This is way too busy. I'm not the boss. But if.
Two billboard, how far apart are they? Let me try to.
They're not very far.
Applicant, how far are they from each other?
There is the app. There is the app, no.
Are trying to look at the plan here. I don't know the number of feet.
Just to repeat that, the, the existing billboard is not on our property, so we haven't gotten exact ma, exact measurement. But it's, it's over 100 feet, you know, considerably over 100 feet, I guess. I would lead you to just look at one of those cars on site, and that's about 20, so I'm, I'm kind of eyeballing it here, but several hundred feet.
Yeah, and it's a few hundred feet away, you know, it takes you at least a good number of seconds to, to from one billboard to another.
Yeah, if, if, if I could, I'd just like to expand on two or three points there. We are talking with the same operator as the city sign, and they've obviously, we've had a conversation about the viability of a sign and kind of perceptually how you would go through this. And they think that it's, it's, it's appropriate, it's, you know, spaced equal, enough to be considerably viable. The, the last thing I wanted to say about the sign itself is, you know, I, I can't really emphasize enough how important this would be to the hotel itself. You know, our hotels were operating at close to 90% occupancy, you know, a year ago, and they're currently in the low 30s and, and kind of barely hanging on. The, the third hotel is great, but it takes a long time to build hotels. And this would be a pretty critical piece of, of additional revenue for both the city and for us in the near term that could help bridge our operations here and, and support our considerable amount of staff on, on site. So, you know, I know, I, I have under, I understand the concerns, but I do want to iterate how important it is to this application as a whole, as a revenue source and as also as advertising for the, the property itself.
That said, the findings before the commission are of three. So the, the first, at least with respect to the sign, so the, the first is whether the, the establishment, maintenance or operation of the sign will, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use. And whether the establishment, maintenance or operation of the signs will, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the property and improvement of the neighborhood in, in such proposed use. So those, those are the two findings before the commission for the amendment of the sign program. And the, the findings for, the question before the commission with respect to the electronic billboard in particular is whether the location, size, scale, design, lighting and materials and color of the billboard harmonized with and are compatible with the immediate surroundings of, of the sign. So the financial considerations are, are not part of what's for the commission right now. As relevant as they may be as background information. I guess for the project as a whole.
Well, why don't we take it individually and do each one, and in that way we can express our feeling on the sign that it's two, two and a half. I don't know. Staff, I think we need your help.
Yeah, so it seems like the, the commission as a whole has been able to, to this master sign program modification, and there's still a little bit of deliberation on the billboard. And so as, as Mr. Gann had, it's stated, the, the findings that the commission needs to make to approve of the billboard or that, that he had just mentioned. Now, you know, if, if the commission decides that they cannot make those findings, then, then effectively the billboard, electronic billboard would not be approved. That being said, the commission could, could still make the findings for the master sign program without the billboard. It's just that those two specific standards relate to the electronic billboard.
Okay, in or in the, for the sake of time, if I may through the chair, my proposal is 100 feet. I, I'm sorry, I was spending some time calculating this out. If somebody's going 70 miles an hour, they're going 110 feet a second. So it's a second distance in terms of driving, which makes sense, because when I see the sign, I'm pretty much getting off the exit almost. So I still have real reservations about it, but I will be willing to go along and approve it as it is. And I just want to, you know, go on record as a concern about that, and if there's a way to alleviate some of my concerns, if there's a way to design it or have it such a way that it, we, we're mindful of the fact that there are, there is another sign about 100 or so feet away. If there's a way to somehow arrange for that, I, I'd prefer that. But for the sake of, because we're going to be, I don't want to be stuck here for 30 minutes talking about a digital sign. And especially if we're probably, you know, we could be overruled either way. So for the sake of that, I'm, I'm willing to say I'm okay to, you know, I'm okay to vote for it. But I'm, I do have reservations and not, I'm not thrilled. It's, it's not, yeah, so. Has that, does that help?
Yeah, it helps, because for me, I, I, I don't know if I can go with the findings, but we can get overturned, but I want it very well stated that maybe they need to unclutter the first sign that they have that they are now to make it work. So everybody gets something. Right now, to me, the two signs are incompatible. And the billboard people are going to tell you it's fine, because they want to stop. So I mean, you know, we got to take that into consideration.
Yep.
The two of them are too much. I will go with it, because I can get overruled very easily, and I agree with Commissioner Joe. I don't want to sit here all night. But I want them to know how I feel about.
Yeah, and, and I would just add that, you know, as much as it's a, you know, our, we're, our concern is not the financials and our, whether revenue to the city or whether it's the compatibility, does it improve the look and character of our area? And that's a concern. So if there's a way to do it and make sure that, you know, I know that the, the current applicant doesn't have the, doesn't have control over that first sign. But, you know, i- if there's a way to make sure that both signs will be taken care of well, that'll go a long way to feeling better about it. So, so I'm willing to move it forward.
Okay, so do we want to vote on each one individually, or can we do it now as a grouping? I think we could probably go with the grouping.
So we can do one motion with the most recent design?
Yes.
Okay.
As shown in the attachment four, is that correct?
Yes, attachment. Four.
Okay, but just to clarify, thinking, when the commission is voting on this, on adopting this resolution, you are adopting the entire resolution? So for those of you who are, if you have reservations or comments about the, the findings on the, for the, the master sign program or the billboard, they, they can be stated in the, in the minutes for, perhaps, but your, your vote will be to approve the findings and the billboard as, as written in the, in the resolution.
So do we have a second?
A second.
And can we have an oral vote, vote please? Got a fly in the kitchen. Is Bernadette available to take our vote?
I was muted, sorry. Chair Quigg?
Yes, and make sure that in the minutes it's very strong.
Vice Chair Joe?
Same for me, please. Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes, and I would concur with Commissioner Quigg regarding the sign, the digital sign, and my concerns.
Commissioner Fung?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
That is five to zero with noted concerns. For the.
And we do also, also have a, have a separate resolution to approve the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
Maureen, can you, Maureen, do you want to?
I can. Here it is. Make a motion to adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the construction of a new hotel at the Weston and Alaf Hotel Site.
Okay.
We have a first with Maureen Davis and a second with Jean-Joe, and can we have votes, please, by verbal votes?
Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Joe?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fung?
Aye.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
That's five to zero to pass the mitigation.
Congratulations.
And, and I want to thank the applicant for doing a diligent job.
Quick.
Yes.
Mr. Mana has a statement?
I'm sorry?
He's frozen. You're frozen, Roscoe.
Chair Quigg?
I.
Quick. There we go. I just wanted to clarify the first. Chair Quigg, clarify the first motion to approve the, the special condition of approval. The, I just wanted to clarify the original motion, the first motion to approve the project was including the special condition of approval to include the parking, shared parking agreement.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. That's all completed, right?
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the, there is a 10 day appeal process on every public hearing. The next item is number eight, and that is new business. Being done, the next item is staff update, and it does say here, city council update.
Can we stop sharing the screen?
Yeah.
Camera screen?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, moxie team will drop off, but thank you all for your time this, this evening. We really appreciate all the comments and look forward to building the new hotel.
So we look forward to having, I look forward to having a new hotel. I've been waiting for 15 years to get it, when you said you were going to do three.
Can we get it done, Kevin?
I, I hope so, you know.
When?
I would have a hard answer for you before this, the, the state of affairs, but, you know, we have got a lot of design to go. And then I'm hoping that early next year, the world is a different place and financing is in place and all those types of things. But, you know, I'm an optimist, and I think this is going to turn around, and we're going to build it quickly.
Okay. I want to be around Seattle. Thank you. Staff updates?
Yes. So just a brief, brief update from the, the last city council meeting. At the city council meeting, the city council heard three items. One is the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. That was the second reading, and that was adopted, so that ordinance takes effect 30 days from that meeting, which was on the 13th. There is a five foot separation requirement between accessory structure and other accessory buildings. And, and I believe Commissioner Joe, you had caught this during the planning commission meeting regarding accessory dwelling units, the difference, the difference between up to 800 square feet and at least 800 square feet. So we did include that clarification in the ordinance, so for those of you who might need a little reminder, so Commissioner Joe had mentioned during the planning commission meeting that, that the, the city can't include any developments of, of at least 800 square feet. So that's the maximum, the minimum, maximum the city can acquire. So if someone wanted to build a 500 square foot ADU, that would be okay. You don't have to hold 800 or more. So it's up to 800 square feet. So thank you, Commissioner Joe, for that, calling that out. Steph was able to include that in ordinance. The other item was for AL Camino Real, so the commission heard that late 2017. Since then, Steph is working with the applicant on improvements to the ground floor as well as the streetscape. Made some modifications to the, to the parking, and then provided a different alternative design. And that alternative design was preferred by the council, and so that project was approved. And so that, that is also subject to a 10 day appeal period. I'm sorry, that is final with the city council, so looks like that'll move forward soon. And then the other item was a 32 Hawthorne Drive, that, that was an appeal of the planning commission approval for demolition of an existing single family home in the Mills Estate area and the reconstruction of a single story house. That was handed back to the planning commission, and so staff will be working with the applicants and the adjacent neighbors on their concerns, and then we're also going to work with the architect to possibly make some modifications. And so we don't know when that will be, going back to the planning commission just yet. But I will be, I have scheduled meetings with the two adjacent neighbors later this week, so more to come on that.
A question for staff. There's been a lot of community concerns about the Mills Park Estate. Can you give a summary of what the meeting expectations will be for Wednesday? Roscoe froze.
Yeah, Roscoe's internet connection is unstable.
Left. As you're looking.
We're not hearing you, Roscoe. You can start over, please.
I was home from the street. Okay, sorry.
Last one.
Let me see if. No. Yes. My, it seems like I'm not experiencing any problems. Let me see, maybe it's my video or my mic.
We lost the audio on you, Roscoe.
Roscoe, maybe try turning off your video. It might, you might be able, or it might have, be less content that your computer has to stream. Sam, are you and Roscoe both in the office?
Yeah.
Maybe you can come over to, to your monitor?
Yeah. With a face mask.
There it comes.
Yeah.
Was that Bernadette?
All right. So it seems like a computer issue, not a networking issue.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Loud and clear.
Okay, so I'm, I'm in the office, so I just. I don't know, the internet connection appears to be a little weak, but where did I leave off?
So the question was about the Mills Park Estate. There's been a lot of community concerns about the developments there and what's being planned or what the meeting on Wednesday will be objective for the meeting?
Yeah, so I spoke with the, the neighbors to the right, and I'm, I'm speaking to them individually, one to the right and one to the left to propose the development. And the neighbor to the right has concerns about privacy and. And the the neighbor to the right has concerns about privacy and vegetation, so I'm hoping to to resolve those issues and maybe work with the architect, but I just want to hear what the concerns are and see what potential solutions we could arrive at. And then separate from that, the neighbor at eight thirty-six Hawthorne has several concerns. The the location of the 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 house being five feet away from the property line. Some protected, some vegetation that they would like protected, so I'm just hoping to to find ways to resolve some of the issues that were discussed and some of those concerns.
Alan, is that what you were asking?
No.
There was another question, Roscoe.
Right, there's a Mills Estate Park community meeting this Wednesday at five thirty. I think there was discussion about what to do with that property, and there's been talk about building soccer fields or grading it, and I think there's a lot of community concerns about the community input on how that property could could be used or what to be used for.
Do that, that meeting is not a city sponsored meeting, so I'm not sure what what the the objective of that meeting is.
So I just, maybe I can breathe a little bit, I happen to be physically at that meeting, but I I think the the proposal that Commissioner Wong was talking about does not fall necessarily into the jurisdiction of the community development or planning department per se. I think it falls more into the Parks and Rec Commission and the Department of Public Works, because there's been a proposal being on the table to redevelop the Mills Estate Park into either a sports field or some other elements of recreational use, because they were up against a timeline to put together an application for state grant, which there has been a letter being issued by our city manager several, I think towards the end of last week. And so I I personally am not sure what the Wednesday meeting is going to be about. But I intend to read up on it and and hopefully I can attend. I think that there has been some outreach being done to sort of give everybody an opportunity to wait in a to see done at that Mills Estate Park, which I think it's a good thing to do, right? So everybody has a chance to voice the concern. Everybody has a chance to put into their two cents as to what they'd like to see developed at that Mills Estate Park, so, but that's the extent of my knowledge to that at this point.
Yeah, I think that's not our issue at all, so.
No, it doesn't fall within planning commission.
Yeah. Okay, um, are there any other commission comments?
Wait, staff? Somebody new coming to play with you? Soon?
Roscoe, Roscoe making an announcement?
He's on Facebook.
What was it? Okay. What's going on?
Roscoe.
Hey, Roscoe. Excuse me?
What is he doing?
No.
Roscoe, what are you doing tonight? Trade with Sam? Oh, my God. Sam, he's trading with you.
Up. Bernadette's lost now, too.
Yep, come on over, you got, I got a spot for you.
Try this one.
Last chance.
Sorry, sorry, apologize. So I apologize that when I meant, I meant to say that it was not a sponsor, a a planning department sponsored meeting. It was a city sponsored meeting, but not by the planning division or a community development division regarding the Mills Estates, so I just wanted to clarify that. And with regards to Commissioner Davis's comment, yes, so beginning on Monday, we will be having a new community development director, starting with the city of Millbrae. Her name is Sarah Smith, and she is the community development director, was a community development director in the city of San Bruno and part of that city of San Mateo, so. She brings a wealth of experience and a lot of background from doing a lot of development projects, so we're very fortunate to have her.
So is she taking someone else's place, or is it just an additional?
She will be taking Brad Meisner's place.
Oh, okay. Okay, and what is your position?
I'm the planning manager, so I will be reporting to to Darcy.
And when is Darcy joining us?
Monday.
Coming Monday?
Yes.
Next week.
Correct.
Okay. Well, that's exciting.
Do you have additional headcounts?
We're we're actually back to back to full staff, actually. We were understaffed for a little bit. Key Lim was acting community development director in in Brad's absence, and now that we've hired Darcy to begin here with us, Key Lim will be resuming his prior responsibilities as public works director.
Hi.
Excellent.
And we will meet her at the, will we meet her at the next meeting?
Yes, at the next meeting, although I don't have any projects for you guys at the next meeting. So that one's likely to be canceled, but perhaps the meeting after that, she'll be able to join us and you can give a brief introduction and you can meet her.
Okay, thank you. So that's a big announcement. Does anybody else have any announcement?
So you're saying that we are not likely to have a meeting, what is it, this
again?
Of November? Is that right?
That's very likely will confirm, but the way that it's looking today, that is correct.
No further announcements? We will be, if we have meetings, yes?
Announcements? Or to announcements now?
We do, yes.
Okay. Then I just wanted, you know, throughout the the Halloween fun that's happening in Millbrae. The rec center and the Rotary Club are sponsoring the youth pumpkin carving contest. Halloween itself. The Lions and the city are doing the drive-in again, and the movie is Ghostbusters, but prior to the movie in the same location, which is the parking lot next to City Hall, behind living spaces, they're doing a modified trick or treat event as well. That starts at three to five, and then the drive-in starts after that, so trick or treating, probably not much happening this year. There's still some fun to be had on Halloween itself, so.
Any other announcements? Actually, Maureen, I totally forgot about Halloween. That's what happens when you get older, and you don't even have grandkids anymore that that will go to the pumpkin patch. Okay.
Oh, just again, make sure to vote, everyone, just encourage everyone to vote. You have elections coming up in early November. We have some really good candidates for Millbrae City Council, check people with experience.
Me, this is not that type of announcement. Halloween parties, okay, yes.
That will affect everybody.
Please remember to vote. With that, I will close adjourned meeting of October the nineteenth. Thank you, everyone, and thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Good night.